The school committee meeting for, the special meeting for July 11th, 2011 to order. So why don't we all rise and say the pledge to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Ev, let me know if there is any time that you need to have me slow down.
I will.
Ev is with us tonight because unfortunately, Lorraine's mother has died, so.
What?
Lorraine Bergland, her mother has died.
Oh, that's her, dear.
Yes, so, um, why don't we go ahead and call the roll? I will tell everybody here, I do have a card if, before people leave tonight, if they could sign. Ev, if you could call the roll.
Linda Avanzato?
Here.
Melvoid Benson?
Here.
Larry Cerisi?
Here.
William Mudge?
I'm here.
Kimberly Page?
Here.
Joe Thompson?
Here.
Richard Welch?
Here.
Julia Held? And a student representative? Mary Ann Carroll. Ed Draper and Phil O'Jay are also.
All right. Tonight, I have received, as I sat down here, a letter from Dr. Thornton. Uh, I'm sorry, I should have gotten out my glasses. It says, "Dear Cam, on July 11th, 2011, at approximately 6:00 PM, I signed my employment contract for the purpose of being the superintendent of schools for the Cumberland School Department. Given this, I am hereby resigning my position as superintendent of schools for the North Kingstown School Department. I stand ready to assist the school committee and the interim superintendent as it meets the needs of the district. Regards Philip Thornton, Superintendent of Schools." So having-
Excuse me.
Yes.
You were a little fast, and I don't know how the audience heard you, but I didn't hear you too well.
Okay, um, would you like me to pass it over to you so you can read it, or?
No, 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 I heard it. I was sitting next to you, but you were a little speedy.
I will slow down. Thank you for that reminder. Basically, the letter says that Dr. Thornton has resigned his position as superintendent of schools in North Kingstown as of today, this evening, to work with Cumberland. What I would propose is that where we go in this meeting is that all school districts have to have a superintendent. And so, we need to do a couple of things here tonight. We need to decide who we are going to appoint as interim superintendent. We need to decide when we will let Dr. Thornton out of his contract so that this interim superintendent can take over. We need to decide how much we will pay this, the interim superintendent. And then we need to decide how we are going to make progress on a search committee for a future superintendent. I know that when I came in here, I have just laid at your place, or just handed out to you some resumes. I've gave you Dr. Phil O'Jay's resume, who is currently our assistant superintendent and is certified as a superintendent, to be superintendent of schools. And he is currently our curriculum director, and there's other things in the packet there. If folks would like to take a moment to take a look at that, and that's what I propose as we go through the meeting tonight.
I think we ought to-
So the first thing we need to do is we need to accept Dr. Thornton's resignation. So I would look for a motion to accept Dr. Thornton's resignation.
And make that motion, that we accept Dr. Thornton's resignation?
I'll second that.
Effective immediately.
Well, let's break that into two different motions, because like I said, we have a couple of things to decide here tonight. So let's take the acceptance of his resignation, and then we can talk about the timeline. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Mudge?
Uh, no, I'd like to accept it effective immediately, and I'll, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'm going to withdraw my second, because I'm concerned about the technicality of that Dr. Thornton is in fact still superintendent until we, as you said, decide or let him out of his contract, or what, we decide on timeline, so.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, the discussion purposes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. This motion is that we accept Dr. Thornton's resignation for his immediate resignation. Mr. Mudge?
Yeah, my view is, is that Dr. Thornton, I assume, will support Dr. O'Jay for the position of superintendent, at least the interim position. And then I believe that, that we can and should appoint Dr. O'Jay to fill in or to take over the interim position as a minimum. Also, I think that in due deference to both the Cumberland and the North Kingstown districts, that Dr. O'Jay should have authority to govern and make decisions based on, you know, the forthcoming year, he's got the experience, the curriculum, and so forth and so on. In addition, I think that what we could do is have Dr. O'Jay and sit down with Dr. Thornton and work out some sort of a, I won't say pact, but an agreement as to if Dr. O'Jay needs his assistance, then we should set aside a pot of money, if you may, to, to pay Dr. Thornton to support Dr. O'Jay. And, and I would assume, I'm assuming Dr. O'Jay will be appointed, I hope he is, but that's my reasoning for accepting his resignation immediately. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson?
Last week in the press, I noticed that you said the interim superintendent could not apply for the regular job. Could you clarify that?
You know, always, sometimes you say things in the press, and then later on you think about them.
Okay, so, forget that.
Right.
In our deliberation tonight, as it come to our discussion of Dr. O'Jay and so forth, so even if he's interim, he can apply for superintendent?
Yes, he could.
Okay, I think that should be made clear, because it's the thing that was, you know, floating about on your old emails and things.
Mr. Thompson?
Sometimes when we have a turnover, there's also some just very minor payroll implications that come along with the deal. And I'm just looking at the calendar, and I'm seeing that we're coming right down to the end of a complete fiscal year on the 30th. So my question is, is, has there been a discussion about a reasonable length of time, which I think Bill has also mentioned? Is there some reasonable length of time that it would take for this turnover? Usually, we'd have a turnover in the feds, it would evolve maybe a week or two weeks, in which case the departing CO would put together a package of standard operating procedures and, you know, critical information and emergency numbers and whatnot, and get that passed over to the, to the new person while they're setting up their, the operation. So I'm just, I'm looking at the calendar thinking, gee, July 31st is the end of a complete pay period, I mean, a complete fiscal year, and, or maybe there's an end of a pay period in there that might, might also work out, you know, conveniently to a reasonable amount of time for the turnover. And I don't know what that might be, so I'm just raising that issue.
Do you have something, Mrs. Avanzato?
I'm just, I don't know what the legal implications are of accepting his resignation effective immediately. I think the idea of having the two Phils work together in some kind of a transition is a, is a good idea, and I think it's one that makes a lot of sense. It's just a question of how it is structured. If Dr. Thornton has 90 days, not suggesting we necessarily hold him to the whole 90 days, I think, but if, if he stayed for, say, even a month, you know, under his contract as it is now, I'm not sure we would need to appoint an interim. I guess it depends, too, what we're thinking of doing down the road. Interim superintendents tend to be costly, and, and I don't know, the committee might want to think about what they're doing on a, for the permanent position, and that might tie into what we do on the temporary.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mrs., Mr. Mo Chen is here.
Go ahead, that's the phone.
Okay, Mrs. Benson?
Um, in reference to something Mrs. Committeewoman Avanzato said, I would think that any change of command would have a number of days for the new one to sit with the old one. And if I can remember closely, and I'm sure my attorney remembers it, when Dr. Thornton brought Dr. Phil's, O'Jay's, name to us, he, one of the things that was so strongly why Dr. O'Jay, he kept emphasizing how they worked together. Because I think it was someone on the school committee who questioned, you're not going to advertise it. And I remember vividly speaking and saying that he's going to be working with Dr. Thornton. And if that's who Dr. Thornton thinks that he can work with and he knows him, we'll have a good team. So, back to the days, I think we would have to check, Madam Attorney, we would have to check with Thornton's contract and see what are the things in it as related to him, not full fill in his contract.
May I, may I answer?
Yes, please.
I ask for you to answer, for legal answer.
I just reviewed his contract, and if you, if you tell him to stay the full 90, then he's bound by the contract to stay for the full 90. But quite frankly, there's really no, there's no penalty if he doesn't. The only severance that he gets is his unused vacation time, so it's not as if you're going to be withholding any money for him if he doesn't stay. So legally, although it says a 90 day in the contract, there's nothing to hold him to the 90 days, no matter what you do tonight. On the other hand, if, if he's already signed a contract in Cumberland, and you know what you want to do here in North Kingstown, to make him stay doesn't, isn't good for him, and isn't good for whoever you may be putting in his place. I recommend that you say something like, maybe the end of July, like effective July 29th, so that the new person starts on the 1st of August. Again, that's a couple of weeks for Mr., for Dr. O'Jay to clean out his desk, clean up his stuff, and I think, Dr. Thornton, I think that the interim could take over, you know, in a couple of weeks, and, and Dr. Thornton could just gradually move out in the next couple of weeks.
Um, I agree with you on that, don't faint.
Okay.
But I'm not through, because I have some legal questions. But usually, we appoint a search committee and other things when we go for superintendent, am I correct?
That's correct, but you're not legally bound to do that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear you say. And if we give Dr. Thornton, say, 30 days, that would be the 1st of August, a month before the opening of school. So would we need two separate motions, maybe three, not to have a such committee? That would be one thing. Appoint Dr. O'Jay as superintendent, and it's not fair to Cumberland, as you said, because their schools will be opening up just as ours.
Well.
And give him so many days to let them work out the days and Dr. Thornton, but do it with the understanding that Dr. O'Jay will be taking over as of the 1st of August.
I address a couple of things that you said. First of all-
Okay.
And just remember, the motion on the floor right now is to accept Dr. Thornton's resignation and to have it be effective immediately. That's what we're discussing.
And, and Mrs. Benson, with all due respect, we're the, you're the North Kingstown School Committee, and I represent the North Kingstown School Committee. I, I don't, I don't mean to sound tough, but I don't care about Cumberland, I care about North Kingstown.
That's what I do, I care about North Kingstown.
So Cumberland appointed him knowing that he was under a 90-day obligation to you. But having said that, if his heart is already in another district-
He's not going to produce for much.
And you have somebody who could take over, then you need to be reasonable. And again, whatever the committee decides, I mean, if you tell him, if you say 90 days, he will get a letter from me tomorrow saying that you have to honor your contract, and we're not letting you out for 90 days.
That's a good one.
But is that in North Kingstown's best interest? All right.
I agree with you, so, Madam Chair, let us finish the motion that we have. And second time, Mr. August, would you read the motion again?
Well, I'm not done speaking, is it?
One last comment, Mr. Mudge, yes?
Let me kind of restate this. Guess what I was saying was, I personally support Dr. O'Jay for the superintendent's job, both interim and long-term, and understanding that, even if it's on an interim basis, I feel that, that he has the experience, and, and maybe if, if anyone would agree to me with, that they would support him as an interim. I would think that we should ask Dr. O'Jay's comments on that. I mean, can he hit the deck tomorrow running? Does he need a week, or, you know, does he need five professional days from Dr. Thornton? Does he need 20 professional days? I mean, I think the superintendent ought to be able to weigh in on this, or the acting superintendent, I don't know if anybody else feels that Dr. O'Jay should be the, at least the acting superintendent, but, you know, I, I think from a professional standpoint, we should, we should speak with Dr. O'Jay, and if he thinks he needs five working days or 10 working days, then we'll make it a, let Dr. Thornton out of his contract, given that he will give us 10, you know, working days over the next three or four months, whatever that time may be. So I, it's an approach that I'm looking at. I guess I got the cart at the head of the horse, but, you know, we're all sitting up here and, and trying to project what the problems of the superintendent's going to be, in fact, there may not be any.
Well, I spoke to, spoke to Dr. O'Jay this morning, and then also this afternoon, but Dr. O'Jay wanted you to say how long you think that you would need to-
You know, I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, but in the event that I should be chosen as the interim superintendent, I would be comfortable, and I've talked about this with Dr. Thornton as well, we would be comfortable with about two weeks to go to about July 22nd. That would give us, I'm not taking any vacation time until then, I don't believe Dr. Thornton is as well, and that would give us a lot of time to sit down every day, go over all of the key issues that I'm going to need to be ramped up on, and only he has the experience to pass on to me. So, we both feel comfortable with that.
All right, so the motion on the table is to accept it immediately, do we want to-
Can I amend that, then?
Or do we like to amend that?
I withdraw, I didn't make a amendment.
Go ahead, Joe, you can amend it.
Can I amend that to, instead of effective immediately, make it July 22nd?
Is there a second?
July 22nd?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the floor for July 22nd and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'm not in favor of that. I, I think that we need to get a little bit further down the street before we determine at what point in time Dr. Thornton, regardless of who is the interim superintendent or acting superintendent, I think we need a show of hands from the, from the administrative staff and the acting superintendent to say, we're ready to release Dr. Thornton. To put a time schedule on it right at this moment, with the ESP contract to be negotiated and completed, to be prepared to open school at the end of August, to be concerned about the future budget, the next budget season. Dr. Thornton put that budget together with Mr. Draper, and he and, and Dr. Thornton are the ones who understand that budget. I don't believe personally that pushing the button and saying two weeks and out the door is the right thing. I would rather make sure that everybody is comfortable with all the knowledge that Dr. Thornton has to give to the acting superintendent, if in fact it's Dr. O'Jay, as Dr. O'Jay or anyone else has not been involved in the creation of that budget, and as we all know, that is a very big budget and requires a lot of background information. The people who put together the budget are the ones that really know and understand it. So, I will not be voting in favor of a date.
I'm going to speak, then, Mrs. Benson, you may speak.
I was going to say, Mr. Avanzato's hand, and then I'll speak.
I did talk to Dr. O'Jay and Dr. Thornton this afternoon about this very subject, and one of the things that Dr. Thornton said was that if there was any time after, he suggested two weeks that he and Dr. O'Jay had discussed that, and he said if there was any time later that it was needed, that he needed to come down for a specific day, that he'd be more than happy to do that. And he stressed that he and Dr. O'Jay are good friends, and that he is not going to leave the district and never answer any of Dr. O'Jay's calls, that, that won't be an issue, that he'd be more than happy to cooperate with Dr. O'Jay on any questions he may have from time to time, and to work with him if, if something specific comes up. So I, I think that, that still lay everyone's fears a bit. So, we'll take Mrs. Avanzato, and then Mrs. Benson.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I fully understand Mr. Welch's concerns, but that does help a little bit, and, and of course, I didn't expect anything different. Just want to take a minute to say, I think we're very fortunate to have Dr. Thornton here. Did a wonderful job, got this district going in the right direction, did some great, wonderful work. And I also think we're very fortunate to have Dr. O'Jay here, and, and we're in that position with him having the superintendent's certificate where we, we got lucky, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Mrs. Benson?
I was going to say, with your discussion with Dr. Thornton this afternoon, you answered most of the questions that was put to you. And it seems as though he and Dr. O'Jay has a good understanding, he offered to come back, and if Dr. O'Jay is going to be superintendent, we cleared that about interim. The first week in November, you have to start working on next week's budget. So I think you answered that question when you said you had talked with Dr. Thornton, and I see no use of keep going in that direction.
All right, we have an amended motion on the table, to have it be that we release Dr. Thornton from his contract on July 22nd. Is there any more discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Oh, Mrs. Avanzato?
I mentioned this earlier, whether or not this ties into a long-term decision, and maybe we should open up the dialogue a little more, because, you know, there's the potential, I know it's been discussed, whether or not we should have a search committee going forward for the long term. If some people feel we don't need to do that, and that it's costly, and that we don't want to do that, then is there a possibility of not having an interim, of having Dr. Thornton stay, and then having Dr. O'Jay take over? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. Would that save money? Is that something people want to explore? I don't know. Before we vote and accept his resignation, does anyone have, think that's worth talking about?
This is what I would say, is that why don't we accept the resignation?
Correct.
And we can set the date, and then we can vote on, and we can discuss the interim superintendent and how we want to do that. So let's take one step at a time, and right now, excuse me, right now, the motion on the table is, is looking at the 22nd of July as the resignation date, so.
My only point was, that, doesn't that box us in? Now you've accepted his resignation, and if we decide to keep Phil here for a month and then put Dr. O'Jay right in, that dictates, that's all I'm saying.
No, we would still be okay, I mean, we could still, we could still go out for a search, you could just extend the interim superintendent position, you can, you can make many decisions, the only thing you wouldn't be able to do is keep Dr. Thornton here. And I, I think we've, we've kind of had that discussion thus far.
I was looking to keep him, but I was thinking that cost-wise, I know it can be very expensive with an interim, but.
Well, that can be, that's what I have down on our list to discuss after we decide who and when they start, we can discuss as to amount. All right, let's go and take a roll call vote on the date of the 22nd.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes, 22nd.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
No.
Passes.
Okay, the motion passes five to one. Now let's take a vote on the main motion, and the main motion is to accept Dr. Thornton's resignation, and now that date would be for July 22nd. Without any more discussion, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
No.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, so that's the first item we needed to accomplish tonight, was accepting the resignation. We will accept his resignation on July 22nd. The next question is, as to, I'm looking for is, who would like to appoint for interim superintendent? Yes, Mr. Mudge?
That's a statement you just said, I think, we're not going to accept it on the 22nd, it's effective this 22nd, isn't it?
That is correct, it is effective the 22nd.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, do we have a motion for anybody for appointing an interim superintendent?
Yes.
Mr. Mudge?
I would like to, I would like to, actually, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. O'Jay as the superintendent of schools, and not on an interim basis. I believe he has all the credentials we're looking for, he's been in North Kingstown 16 years, a resident, and he has what we call, what he called skinning the game, he was many of all these years, and, and he did work very closely, obviously, as a curriculum and assistant superintendent with Dr. Thornton. I'm sure Dr. Thornton would give him the highest recommendation, and I feel that, as Mrs. Avanzato says, that perhaps going to a search committee and so forth and so on would be, you know, extremely costly. So I think we have kind of a gem under our nose, and, and I guess it's inappropriate for me to recommend it from interim, when I'm trying to support him for the permanent position, so, I guess, I don't know what you want to do about that, Madam Chair.
You're putting a motion on the table to nominate him as, appoint him as superintendent, not interim, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that.
And that wasn't a question yet, okay, but yes.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second discussion. I'll, go ahead, Mrs. Avanzato. Well, I guess, I didn't talk to Dr. O'Jay about this motion.
I don't think he should.
But I guess one of the things that I do, I would say that we, we probably should think about is, the last time we had a search committee, we did make sure that it was made up of, it was made up of residents, it was made up of teachers, it was made up of administrative staff, and while I think very highly of Phil O'Jay, and I think there, there is a good probability I may take that step, I do see some merits in making sure that everybody else is able to have some buy-in in the community, and to make sure that this is a step that is well-taken. And so, it's one of those things, we have a unique situation here of being able to make sure that he does fit the job. Right now, we have all seen the job he has done for the last two years as curriculum director, and I've been very happy as to the way that we're moving in curriculum. I think it might be good for the community just to make sure that he is the person, and so it would be that sort of thing of, let's have an interim. And we could always have an interim for a period of time of, say, two or three months, and then at that time, we could decide if we wanted to set up the search committee or we wanted to go forward. But I still think it would be a good idea to have an interim, because we haven't had that community being able to vet this, the situation. Mrs. Avanzato?
I think you make some excellent points. I've been torn about that issue. We've done this several times before in this community, and we have had a lot of participation on our search committees, and has allowed the public, teachers, and everyone to get involved, and that's always a good thing. At the same time, I, I wouldn't want, I don't want people to feel as though they're putting their names in, and we're going through all of this as just purely an exercise, when we all kind of have our eye on who we might like to see, so I'm, I'm sort of keeping that in mind, too. Maybe, at the very minimum, I would think that suggests as an alternative, we could have an interview of Dr. O'Jay with the committee, you know, and that way, we could ask the questions that we normally ask of a superintendent candidate, and that would be one way of exploring. Or, as you said, too, what- Or, as you said, too, while his interim is another way of us, and I don't know if we would set up something formal, or if we would just experience him in the position, or if that would give the community enough of a buy-in, or if more of a formal interview would be something that people would be interested in doing.
And one more thing before we jump, I jump to the next set of questions, is we ought to make sure that, when I talked to Dr. Thornton this morning, we were talking about an interim position, and I don't know if he's ready to jump in as superintendent, so we absolutely need to ask him before we start nominating him for a position that we don't know if he is ready to go into.
Can we ask him that question?
Yes.
Dr. Thornton, would you accept the?
Dr. Ojai.
Lots of doctors around here.
Well, my sense of direction is a little crooked these days. Uh, would you accept the nomination, uh, as superintendent of schools? If?
I, I wanna stop by saying how flattered I am and how much I appreciate the confidence you've all expressed tonight. Um, I, I'm very interested in being the superintendent of schools. If, if the committee decides that they would like to have me right away, I'm ready to go. But I do see a value in some kind of an interview and getting the community involved. Um, I, I appreciate the comment that Mrs. Avanzado pointed out, and I've had this discussion with a few of you as well about, you know, you, you have expressed that you're interested in having me, and I think that, um, people from the outside who would be considering running for this position would probably understand that, and it would affect the whole process. But I'm, I'm not against having some kind of, um, interview with you, um, to be clear with you, uh, and from you about what you want, and so that I can let you know what I'm hoping for. And if that interview can include other members of the general population of North Kingstown, that would be great, too. So I'm, I'm wide open to that. But, you know, if, um, if it's your decision that in two weeks that I am the superintendent of North Kingstown schools, I would be happy to accept. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Benson and then Mr. Thompson.
First, I wanna say that, um, thank you, Dr. Ojai, for your words, and, um, I'm glad Billy asked you if you wanted, if you would be superintendent. That takes care, one phase of it. And about, um, having an interview, I think that's an excellent idea, that you would interview. And then we could, um, include members of the committee, people who have been here, teachers who have son, and parents. And I think from, I know from the type of homework that children have been bringing home and other things speaks very well for you. So instead of calling it a such committee, that was a nice idea. Instead of calling it a such committee, we would, um, would a motion be in order to have a committee? Cause see, we got two or three things going here. We got the word interim that was thrown out, and interim was thrown out with the idea that the person who was interim couldn't be superintendent. And we have voted on Dr. Thornton's date, so like everything else, we're gonna have to give double time when double time is needed. And let's form a committee to work with him and interview him. And Dr. Thornton has been very gracious to say he will come back if Dr. Ojai needs him. And this about the budget and so forth, I'm sure in their working relations, they did discuss things concerning the budget. Am I correct, Dr. Ojai?
I, I don't pretend to have the familiarity that Phil Thornton does, but I, I know a lot about the budget, yes.
Yes.
And I plan on learning a lot more in the next two weeks.
Yes. So where we are now is, let's, um, I would suggest and would make, would make a motion. There's a motion already on the table.
There is a motion on the table, and right now, the motion on the table is about, the motion is to point, to appoint, um, Dr. Ojai as superintendent, not interim. If we want to go this route of eventually forming some sort of a search or some sort of research, what I would say is we should withdraw the motion on the table and make a new motion to have, um, Dr. Ojai as an interim superintendent, and then we can follow the steps of starting to have a committee to look at him as superintendent. But that would be my suggestion.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
With your suggestion. We have already granted Dr. Thornton the 22nd.
Correct.
So interim would be for a very short time, and I think any parent with, uh, children in school would want to be familiar with who's gonna take the him, of him. So we know he's leaving in the 22nd, so we're gonna have to, would it be in place now, too? I think we're kinda getting ahead of ourselves of something, cause we've already stated the date for Dr. Thornton, 22nd. So what we need doing is getting a date and setting up interviews, because if he serves as interim superintendent, there'll be a boost in his pay.
The interim superintendent will take, um, to take the role on the 22nd.
Uh-huh.
It seems as if the committee is, is most likely to pick Dr. Ojai, but we need to decide right now. The motion on the table is to pick Dr. Ojai as the superintendent, not as the interim.
Okay, okay.
So, let me go down. Um, I see the hands. Uh, Joe, I have, Mr. Thompson, I have you next, and then I have Mr. Mudge. Do I have anybody who I've missed on my right? Mr. Welch. Okay, so Mr. Thompson.
I had, uh, made the second on Bill's, uh, motion. He kinda surprised me with it, which, which gives the lie to anyone that thinks that you and I plan things in advance and know what the other guy's gonna say. Um, it kinda surprised me, but at the same time, I wanted to second it so we could talk about it, and we, we got out some really good information through the discussion, which is good. I think what Billy and I have been striving for all the way along has been an openness and a transparency in the process. And I, I'm afraid to tell you, on this one, I think we'd be better served by, by not naming Dr. Ojai directly as a committee to be the, uh, full-time superintendent, because I agree, I think we need some community buy-in. Uh, I would like to have an interview, and I'm particularly interested in, um, going and reviewing some of the, uh, the goals that, I know there was, uh, three goals that the, uh, that Dr. Thornton had stemming from the previous committee, and I've had a chance to look at those and think about them very deeply. And I, uh, I disagree with, with all three of them, actually, or I have, I have problems with all three of them. So I definitely wanted to talk about the goals, and, and I think the committee should come together, uh, somehow and, and share our own thoughts and feelings about, uh, what the goals should be for the new superintendent. So, um, I don't know whether it's more appropriate to, for me to with, and I will withdraw my second if we wanna go ahead and change the original motion and make it, um, that we nominate Dr. Ojai as interim superintendent. Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
So Mr. Thompson, you're withdrawing your second.
Is that all right?
Yes.
I will withdraw my second.
All right.
May I make a motion now?
Do you withdraw the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the motion has been withdrawn.
And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Ojai as the interim superintendent for a period of, of, uh, just, just a, a period of indeterminate length. How's that? Okay?
That would be fine, and we can determine that later.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Avanzado, um, has seconded the motion. The motion on the floor is to appoint Dr. Ojai as interim superintendent.
For an interim, for an indeterminate?
For an indeterminate length of time.
So you have a motion and?
I have, the motion is second, so discussion. Mr. Welch.
Um, I don't, I need a question answered, uh, before I could know how to vote on that motion. I have discussed this with Dr. Ojai. Um, he, I believe, understands where I am coming from. I believe, quite frankly, that we have a job to do our diligence for the community, for the students, for the faculty, and for the taxpayers, to make sure that we avail ourselves to the best possible candidate that we can afford that's available in the marketplace. Without doing any search whatsoever, uh, which is, sounds like the direction that some of you wanna go in, I cannot vote in favor of that. Um, Dr. Ojai understands this is not a personality thing with me. This is a process that I believe needs to be done. Now, people can say, and I'm not gonna argue the point, that Dr. Ojai is the best person available in the marketplace today. Okay, fine. I don't know that, the, the town doesn't know that, the teachers don't know that, the students don't know that, and the taxpayers don't know that. Um, and I think that we're?
Hold on, let him finish. He's, there's nothing that he's doing that is against the rules, so he may finish. Go ahead.
So, my, my point here is that I have spoken with, uh, HR about this in the former, uh, situation where we hired a consultant to, um, provide us with candidates for superintendent. Um, Ned, I believe you told us it ran somewhere around $20,000?
Yeah, yeah, to, to budget for?
I have had conversation with Deb Gardner from, uh, HR and asked her about the use of school spring and national education publications and what that might run us in order to do a limited search. The school spring would take us across the country, national education publication.
Point of order again, please.
There's nothing that he's doing that is against the rule.
Yes, it is. It's not?
No, he's fine.
It's not germane to the motion.
Let him finish.
It is not, it is not germane to the motion regarding the interim appointment.
Finish. This, this is fine. He may finish. Mr. Welch.
If you want me to vote in favor of your motion, then it is germane.
Finish, finish your comments, please.
For the next discussion.
All right, that's enough, just finish your comments, please.
Madam Chairman. So, I, I would recommend, quite frankly, uh, in order to vote and go forward, is that there will be a search and that we establish a budget for that search, and it could be as little as $2,500. And that's all I'm asking for. I'm asking for us to go out, say we're gonna go out, and it is not a slight against Dr. Ojai, not at all. It is looking to see who is the best available person for this community in the marketplace today. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, a motion to appoint Dr. Ojai as the interim superintendent for an indeterminate period of time.
Call the motion.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Um, my point was gonna be that, that you could vote yes on this motion and still be for a search. It's not inconsistent, kind of what Mr. Mudge was saying.
Absolutely.
Um, just, I guess we're not talking about having a search right now, but when we do, I have a point to make about that.
Okay.
Correct. Right now, that is not a part of this motion.
Okay.
Is there any other comment on the motion on the floor? All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, please. William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
No.
Linda Avanzado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
Five to one, it passes. Thank you very much. All right. Now, things that I said I wanted to accomplish here today, I said I wanted to make sure we accepted the resignation. I wanted to appoint a, um, interim superintendent. We have decided that that'll be Dr. Ojai, and that he will start on the 22nd. The next thing we should talk about is, we should talk about the pay, and we should also then talk about what we want to do in the future for the search committee, or what we don't, that maybe this is something we wanna put off to talk about at our August meeting. Um, so, um, I will state this first, before when we, um, paid Dr. Thornton, when he stepped in as the interim superintendent, um, this, Mr. Welch and I, today, we're doing a lot of our homework and making sure that we understood the NASDAQ, but, um, also, um, understanding what we paid the interim superintendent before, and Mrs. Gardner told me that we paid, um, Dr. Thornton, when he took up this job, $200 a day to, um, in addition to his pay as the curriculum director. That is well below, right now, interim superintendents are getting anywhere, um, between $500 and $600, and it is also below, um, any other, um, offers that we've had. So this would be a very good deal for us. Um, and remember, at the same time, while he would be working as the interim superintendent, we would not have a curriculum director. So he'd be paid the curriculum, um, director pay plus the $200 as interim. So we have the potential of, of saving some money. So that would be my recommendation, so.
So move?
Well, why don't you state the motion and then?
Well, if I understand it correctly, I move that we pay, uh, the interim superintendent, Dr. Ojai, uh, his current salary as curriculum developer, plus $200 a day during the interim time of his being interim superintendent.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay. So the motion on the floor and the second, discussion.
So, uh?
Mr. Mudge, would you like to be the first to discuss?
Please.
Go ahead.
If the numbers then ring out to be that if, if he was an interim superintendent, you know, for a year, that would be, you know, 50 weeks, okay? That's like $50,000 more than he's currently getting as curriculum director. And I think that would be, uh, 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 quite excessive, to be, to be honest. So I think we ought to reevaluate that in terms of, uh, a, an ultimate, an ultimate salary that we would expect him to get and adjust that to, uh, give him basically as, as an acting interim superintendent, to give him superintendent's pay.
Remember, you wouldn't be paying, um, there would be one position that you would still be down. Uh, I just wanna remind the committee of that. And right now, while you have an indefinite time, you can always end the indefinite time, appoint him, um, whoever is superintendent, and then you aren't paying that fee.
Yeah, I, I do understand that, but the fact of the matter is, uh, I actually really don't know what Dr. Ojai is, is making today. Uh, I guess I could look at my notes, but, you know, that's, you know, you're talking $200 a day, that's, uh, that's, uh, $50,000 a year. And again, I think that I would be more than willing to pay Dr. Ojai, uh, what the current superintendent was paid before he, uh, he, he left, whatever those numbers, you know, add up to.
Great, Mrs. Benson.
I didn't go in and have a conversation with Ms. Gardner, but, um, I think that, um, after Dr. Fear left, how long was it, Mrs. Gardner in Human Resource, before we elected a superintendent?
I think Dr. Dr. Fear left, I believe it was, um, before the end of June.
About six months.
And, um, we did not appoint Dr. Uh, um, Dr. Thornton until March is when we had the contract. So, um, it was a little bit less than a year, but it was a fairly long period of time.
That was a long period of time.
No, I don't, I'm not saying? Can I share?
Although, I, we also had, we had, um, Dr., no, we did not have, uh, Mr. Hernan in there. He was in there prior to Mrs. Fair.
I think it was, no, I think he waited to sign his contract, but I think he actually took over as superintendent earlier.
That's right.
But, Mr. Mudge, can I answer your question? The, Dr. Thornton's present salary for the 2011, 2012 school year is $142,800.
Thank you.
Is that including benefits and everything?
Well, Dr. Ojai still has all the benefits in his contract.
Okay, so we would work on his base salary like Dr. Thornton was getting. Well, it seems now that it's a motion needed, and the discussion needs to be on who's going to be put in as an interim or curriculum director.
We don't need to discuss that right now, and that's not the motion on the table. Um, Mr. Mudge?
Well, that's gonna be a very important thing.
I don't, Chairman, could, could I make a recommendation that, that perhaps, you know, if I was sitting with Dr. Ojai sitting there right now, I might wanna have an important with Dr. Roger sitting there right now, I might want to have an input into this conversation, because if we're going to give him nothing, he might say, "I don't want anything." So, I'd make him make a motion if you have a couple...
We have a motion on the table.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation then, or look for an amendment, that possibly yourself or somebody else sit down with Dr. Roger, okay, and come up with a number that, you know, is mutually acceptable to three or four people as well as himself. I mean, we're negotiating this in public, and I don't...
We don't want to, we don't need to, we're here in public, this is what we have paid before, I think this is, and this is the sort of thing of, it is perfectly acceptable to pay this again, we don't want to start, we certainly don't want to go up, since that's what we've paid before, and I guess I would say, what, you always look at what the position is worth, and so it's not necessarily that you say you are worth less, you know, if we thought the interim superintendent was worth $200 a day before, there shouldn't be any reason why suddenly that same position isn't worth the same amount now.
Wait, but I'm, yes, I'm...
Mrs. Avanzato.
I was just going to concur as far as keeping it less complicated, obviously the committee will have to be aware, if we enter into this arrangement, that it can't go on forever, so that we'll be aware of the obligation to move forward on the superintendency, but I think we should, you know, stick to the going rate.
Mrs. Page, if I could, if I remember correctly, the last time you paid $200 a day because Dr. Thornton was doing two jobs, you're going to be expecting Dr. Roger to do two jobs, he's going to have to keep up on the curriculum and do the superintendent's job, so you're asking him to fulfill his present duties as assistant superintendent and taking on more duties, and I believe that's why it was the $200 a day, because he was actually doing two jobs, which is the same thing you're going to be asking Dr. Roger to do.
You know, if anything, this will help us to then speed up our decision as to where we're going to go next in terms of the search committee, so that this isn't a prolonged period. So, okay, right now I see Mr. Thompson, then I see Mr. Welch, and then I see Mrs. Benson. So, Mr. Thompson.
Something just whizzed past my head, the $200 a day that you just referred to, was that, that wasn't the only amount, that was on top of...
He gets his present salary as assistant superintendent, plus he gets $200...
Which is what, which is, what's the current salary for Dr. Roger?
$118,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Welch.
Just to clarify, when does this, what is the start date of this then extra stipend or pay increase? Is it the 22nd of July?
It would be the 25th, because Dr. Thornton ends on the 22nd, that's a Friday.
Oh, okay, so it would be the 25th, okay.
Correct.
And, for those of you who weren't here, when we appointed Dr. Thornton, it was before, prior to the end of the fiscal year, and he asked that we extend it through to June 30th. I'd like to say that any of these agreements should end at the time a superintendent is appointed, no matter who it is. They don't go on to some other future date, like that stated right up front. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, you're asking, are you asking for an amendment to the motion?
Or an understanding for all parties that if the appointed date is November 1st, that's the date the added stipend ends.
I think you only, you're only giving, the motion was to pay the $200 as interim superintendent, so as soon as we end the interim superintendency, that will be where, when it would end.
That's not what happened the last time, that's why I'm saying that.
Right, the other thing, well, it didn't happen the last time because of another reason, but, keep in mind, it's only for days he works, so that $200 stipend, if he's taking a vacation day, he doesn't get a stipend, if he's taking a sick day, he doesn't get a stipend, you're paying him $200 a day for the days he's worked, so that limits some of it. That's something, what you're talking about, Mr. Welch, there was another reason for that, if you recall, it wasn't because we continued the interim, but those are the kinds of things we need, you as a committee need to discuss and work out with Dr. Roger.
That's a good question, that's a good question.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Welch?
No.
Mrs. Benson.
The attorney threw another light on it, and I wouldn't expect to pay him the days he doesn't work.
Right.
But, if my recollection is correct, between superintendent for Fear, I never did learn to pronounce a name, and the appointment of Dr. Thornton, I think the reason why it was such a lengthy time, it was because he was just coming new as curriculum director, and for quite a period, because I know I went in personally and talked with him, and for a period, he kept putting out there he wouldn't accept the job, am I correct?
You're correct.
Uh-huh. So, know that Mr. OJ, Dr. OJ is here, and from his resume that we got this evening, he has given us plenty to know that he will accept the job. So, the thing that I'm seeing, in order to keep the organization moving smoothly, sometimes we have to go backwards before we go forward, and maybe we need to ask him to bring us a recommendation, and to a committee, a call, a special school committee, that is possible, with the Secretary of State and with the Attorney General, as to whom he could give some of his duties to, because there are a lot of things different now than it was. We got the financial crisis within the state, we know that, we got the pension crisis, and those things are not going away, and whomever is going to be our leader needs to be in the forefront of those things and that discussion, because I see some, I see some great things coming, even connected with the pensions, and we know that's a huge problem, and the financial situations are going. So, for clarification for the audience and everything, because I know their mind is going, except, I'm looking at some who remind me, when I was teaching, you could always tell by expressions if kids understood something, we have a few, I'm scanning the room, but I think we should go back, the next thing should be as to meeting with Dr. OJ, the chairman and he, and one member of the committee, and the attorney, and getting his recommendation as to who within the organization of the teachers and things, because we cannot close schools, and they are going to open in time, because we have a set number of days. Whom do he think could be able to come in to his position?
All right.
Mrs. Gardner can tell you she wasn't in her position, but I went in the personnel myself and personally made long-distance calls, and she got out information she was working for someone else then. This is not just a who's going to who what, because school is going to open, and we're going to be faced with those challenges, that's finance, the financial situation of the state, the pension situation, and if you read the paper last week, we were listed among those who had pension obligations, and a new superintendent, and a superintendent, and he's already stated that they work together, need to be able to go to these meetings and represent us and feel free to give our opinions and so forth, so maybe we should go and talk about who we could get, meet with him as quickly, and see who he could recommend for curriculum director, not permanently.
I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump in, Mrs. Benson, because Dr. Roger and I did have this conversation, and...
See, I haven't had the privilege of having these conversations, and I have to ask these questions.
Very good questions, and so, like I said, we had a long talk this afternoon, we went through many different scenarios. One, I want to remind the committee that the motion on the floor is to pay Dr. Roger $200 per day as interim superintendent, that's our motion. I'll quickly sidetrack, and then we'll get back to the motion at hand.
Call the question, yeah.
One of the things Dr. Roger and I talked about, and actually I talked about with Dr. Thornton, was how would we handle the curriculum direct, the curriculum position, and right now, Dr. Roger has said that he thinks he can handle both at the same time. When we start getting into the school year, we will need to make a decision probably as to how we're going to handle the superintendent, if he was going to make the transition after, perhaps, we've gone through a search or something. But, and before that is settled, one of the other things that I talked about with Dr. Thornton was that we could have some people come in to handle some of the curriculum issues. We now have curriculum, do you call them directors?
We have curriculum coordinators.
Coordinators. We have them at various parts of the schools, and we also could bring somebody in, such as if we were having a writing meeting, we could bring in some of our past principals, that they could be a part of the meeting, such as Jane Congdon or Stony Lane, former Stony Lane, Joan Cruthers, that both of those would be people who we could pay to come in to handle some of those situations. It doesn't mean that we can't, that we can't eventually solve this issue, but we have discussed how there would be some other ways to solve this while we don't have somebody in curriculum. So, let's get back to the motion at hand, and the motion is to pay Dr. Roger $200 per day as interim superintendent. Can we call the question?
Call the question.
Roll call vote? Yes, please. Okay, William Mudge?
I'd like to, can I amend the motion?
No, at this point, you can vote on it yes or no, we can get back to you if you would like to think about it, but we cannot amend at this point.
But can't you amend the motion?
No, not at this point, we're calling this...
Not at this point, but I guess the attorney is serving his parliamentarian, but after the motion is made, and whatever way it comes out, then you can also amend it to the motion.
Then you should vote no, if you don't want, like the motion, then you should vote no.
No, I was asking concerning the amendment, am I correct?
Well, you've called the question, so vote no, if you don't like this particular motion, vote no, and then make another motion.
But when a motion has been passed, you can make an amendment to the motion that's been passed.
No, you can't, you need to either vote yes or no on the motion.
Chairman, I just, we're in a position here, we shouldn't be, I want to see Dr. Thornton, not Dr. Roger, he's certainly the superintendent, I've said that before, but on the other hand, I don't think it's appropriate to us not meeting before in private session to maybe discuss this issue, this financial issue with him, and I think it's inappropriate, and therefore, at this time, because the process is inappropriate, I'm going to vote no.
I don't think that Dr. Roger has any problems with this pay.
Well, he shouldn't.
You know, I talked about this with Mrs. Page, and, you know, obviously, I'm the recipient of that pay, so it puts me in a little bit of a tough spot making a comment here.
We need to vote no.
I feel that it's an appropriate amount, I don't, I don't feel, I like the idea of keeping it simple, I would be doing two jobs, I would hope to be doing two jobs for a very short period of time, until the superintendent issue is wrapped up, and I don't feel it would be helpful to have, say, an interim assistant superintendent, I think that would just give me more work than less work, I would have the job of getting someone ramped up in that line while I'm, you know, working on the superintendent work. I feel like the work that I've been doing as curriculum director is in a good place right now, I have a lot of great people, teachers and administrators working in teams, preparing for our professional day, we plan on doing that at our workshop coming up, so I think there are a lot of good things that are already in place, and that I can oversee both of these things. I don't want to do that for a long time, I remember from Phil Thornton telling me that when he was in the position, it really was something that was a lot, to do both of those jobs, and he was looking forward to the point where that period would be over, and he would have one job and have another person to do the other job, so, and, you know, that being said, I think it's an appropriate wage, I don't, I think it's going to save a lot of money from bringing in either an interim superintendent or an interim assistant superintendent, and we can make do with me doing both jobs for, you know, a short period of time.
I certainly wish we had an opportunity to have this discussion in private, okay?
I understand, sure.
I just don't like to discuss this, these type of matters necessarily in public.
This doesn't need to be a private discussion, if anything, this should be a public discussion. Is there any other discussion, and then we'll call the question once we begin?
Yes, I want, since we're opening it up, discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Avanzato. I want to make it clear on the record that these, that I understand it's awkward to talk about these matters, especially in front of Dr. Roger, but the law requires that we do, and that's why we're doing it, it isn't, obviously, it's preferable to be doing it in private, but we really can't, so that's, just want to clarify that for the record, that this is the correct process.
And I will remind everybody that if we go outside, another interim superintendent will cost us, you know, we've already made the decision we're appointing Dr. Roger, most interim superintendents get $600 a day, so this is a lot less than other superintendents, so, and it is fair, because it is what we have paid Dr. Thornton when he was the interim superintendent, so we're not going any higher, we're doing the same. So, are there any other comments on the motion? All right, let's try again, let's try to call the question. Motion to pay the interim superintendent his current salary plus $200 per day. William Mudge?
I'm going to abstain.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Elvoid Benson?
Yes.
Passes five one, with one abstention, I'm sorry. All right, the only other thing I had for us to discuss tonight was the search, and I guess maybe, from what I'm hearing from the committee, is that you'd like to all wait a little bit on that, am I correct, and maybe we should put that on our August agenda? What is the feeling? Mr. Mudge?
Before we go to a search committee, I think it would be, and I'd probably, we could probably kill a couple birds with one stone here, you know, perhaps we could interview Dr. Roger publicly, as well as having the teachers or anybody else come in and have it all out in one night, if you may, you know, wife, why push this thing off, and I don't know if you'd be acceptable to that, but that would be one way to get the community involved, to do it rather quickly, obviously, I'm in your camp right now, but if we want to bring the public in, let the public come up, and if they feel that you shouldn't be the superintendent, let them say it, so, you know, I don't think we have to extend this thing on beyond that now, if we have a meeting and the consensus is that the public doesn't feel that you should be the superintendent, da-da-da-da-da, then maybe we should go to the next step, okay, with a search committee, but I think putting the search committee out before, even enough to talk to you, as well as the public, I think is, again, the cut head of the horse.
I'll take you a second, Mrs. Benson, I guess maybe I should rephrase what I was, what I was thinking of, is I wanted to know, if we wanted to start putting together a search committee, then we need to start saying, these are the sort of people we want on the search committee, and so therefore we'd be looking for volunteers, such as, I've already had two principals who have said to me, if we start a search committee, they would be interested in doing it. If we want to get community members, we need to start saying to teachers who probably are not checking in on the school, that we'd like some teacher representatives, you know, what we could do is, Mrs. Nutini... You know, what we could do is, Mrs. Nutini, Dr. Thornton's administrative assistant, gave me a list of the openings, or not the openings, but the types of people who we asked for volunteers from before, because we did ask for community members, we asked for a CLAC representative, we, as I said, for principal from each of the levels of school, we asked for teachers, I believe, from each level of school, we asked for PTO reps. Those are the sort of folks, we had a search committee that was rather large, it was a rather, like, about 20 people, but if we would like to do the same sort of, just search again, then we should probably put out, we could basically say, we want to do the same groups as we did before, and therefore, we would start advertising on the website that we're looking for names of people to put forward, and then we all vote to say, yes, this is somebody who we want on the search committee or not. That's what I'm asking the committee, if you, we want to start that process. Mrs. Evans-Ado.
Well, being a proponent of a correct process and allowing the community to be involved, argues for putting together a search committee, but, as I said earlier, I think many things argue against putting together a search committee in this instance. First of all, how many search committees have we had for superintendents in the last handful of years? We were asking people to put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. I see someone in, in the audience that sat on at least three of them. And it's, you know, we're talking about the summertime and going into the fall, a lot of time, effort, and work, and money on a lot of people's part, and my concern is, number one, people are going to feel that the outcome is predetermined, because we, we have our assistant superintendent in as interim, and they will feel, they may feel like there's no point, or if we end up appointing Dr. Oge, they will maybe criticize us as having had that goal from the beginning. That's a, a concern. The other really large point that I see, the large advantage to having, rather than a search committee, something like an interview committee to interview Dr. Oge, stability of this district. You know, Dr. Thornton came in here, and he had a vision for this district, and he tailored our strategic plan to that vision, and he really worked on it. He used the strategic plan for the first time in, you know, 10 years, we used our strategic plan, and we were going towards goals and making a lot of ground, and Dr. Oge was right next to him when he did all of that. He knows exactly the direction we're going in. I think it's critical for this district to have some stability. That's just my own personal opinion. I, I hate to say, don't have another search committee. Part of me likes to see what candidates are out there. I don't think we're going to find a lot of people that are going to be as well suited to our community as Dr. Oge is. Everybody's very happy with what he's been doing, and again, to my mind, it's the stability factor. He was there with Dr. Thornton through all of the building that he's been doing, and he knows the direction we're going in. So, in this one case, I think it argues against, myself personally, I would prefer to have an interview committee rather than a search committee. I think, I think to go through all of that and then just end up appointing Dr. Oge, people will feel burned.
All right, I have Mr. Welch, and then I have Mr. Thompson.
Mrs. Gardiner. What would be the timeframe to go through school spring and/or a couple of national education publications before you could expect a reasonable return for seeking applicants for superintendent? Would you say, would, would you say, would, would 30 to 45 days be a reasonable timeframe? Right. Okay. The, the school spring would, right, so there's no cost to use school spring. And the other day, when I asked you about it, you looked to see if the national implications of people looking for superintendents, and there was, and if my recollection serves me correct, school spring does some pre-screening? They don't, they don't screen, okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Thompson.
I like the idea of an interview committee. I think we've, we would be setting people up with false expectations if we called it a search committee, having heard what I've heard tonight on the, on the, at the table here. But I do go back to saying, we need to be open and transparent in our dealings with the community, and someone else said this, I just wrote it down, we need a community buy-in. They need to buy into what we're doing here. This is their superintendent. So, therefore, I would like to find out some way of doing a modified committee, and if you want to call it an interview committee, that would be fine. I think Dr. Oge would probably look forward to meeting with some of the constituencies that you've just mentioned, some of these groups, and explain himself, and talk about his goals, and find out from them what they, what they're looking for. And I think that would be all for the good. So, I, I don't want to just have us put him in with no discussion, but at the same time, I don't think we should have a search committee, in the old-fashioned style of search committee.
Mrs. Benson, you had your hand up next.
I like the idea of an interview committee, and no matter what route we take, it's always going to be someone who's not satisfied, because this is the year of pick-on public officials. So it's going to be always someone who's not satisfied. But I think each of us sitting here can think of people in the community, can think of people with a special education parents, can think of people from their high school and other places that we could easily name to be on the committee, if we're given a chance to ask them that, and on the superintendent's interview committee. And I really like the interview committee, and Mrs. Asavano brought some good points out. You brought some good points out. Say what?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And, because it looks like that we are making this a long, drug-out thing. And it is an open process, because we are sitting here talking about it, and I don't know what the contract is with school spring. What is it, what is there in your fee for dealing with school spring, Mrs. Gardiner? Say what?
About eight.
Eight what?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
That, that eight thousand covers us for all of the hiring that we do in the district, not just for one position.
All of the hiring?
All of the hiring, yes.
And that's significantly less than what we used to pay in, in newspaper ads. That was why we've made the switch a number of years ago.
I think we made the switch, but I never did know what the cost of it was.
Like I said, it was significantly less than the newspaper ads, and that was why.
That's fine. But school is, I pointed out, in January, sometimes this budget has got to be given to the council. What is the date that we have to have the budget to the council? I, I'm not grinning, that's an important question.
March of next year.
You're talking about next year?
Yes.
Oh, this year's already done.
Yes, I know this year's already done. But what is the date that the school committee has to?
It's usually either the first Monday or Tuesday in March.
Uh-huh. And I just don't see a lot of time here to go with a, I think we should have a search committee, and if we are given a privilege to name people to the search committee, I think all of us have people in mind. I see some in the audience tonight who's been very faithful with the schools and everything, and who has dedicated their lives to working with these, these different schools. We don't know the people in the different PTAs and so forth, so let's have a committee.
All right, I see Mr. Welch's hands, and then Mr. Mudge, he'll be up after that.
Yeah, I, I just want to pick up on something that Mrs. Benson just said. There are some people in the audience that have, in the past, participated in the search of the previous superintendents, and if it wouldn't bother anybody at this table, and while I realize it's, it happens to be a small portion of our community, I for one would like to see how the audience that we have here feels about going out for a search, even though it be limited, versus not.
Let me think about that. I don't know if we, I don't know if this is, we don't have a general population and general consensus, that's, that's the reason I'm like, we always have such a limited group coming to our meetings. I think the idea of an interview committee is good. I think that we want to make sure that we broaden, to make sure that we advertise it so that other folks have an opportunity to make sure that they come out. I, I think we can make, that's a decision we can make, we don't need to poll the audience to, that, this is, you know, that's why we're elected here, is to make sure that we, we look at the issues, we decide on them, and then we move forward. I'm hearing a general consensus, and I know you have your hand up, Mr. Mudge, I will get to you next, of people liking this interview idea, and I guess my preference would be that if that's the way we want to go, that we do an advertisement so that when we come back on our August meeting, we would have some names, and we would be able to pick enough people to start that process, that, you know, that's not necessarily what we're going to do tonight. So, Mr. Mudge, and then Mrs. Evans-Ado.
Like I said earlier, you know, I, I think that the school committee, we have the final vote, okay, should all of us interview Dr. Oge, to ensure that we understand whether we, you know, will fully support him. I personally do. Now, with that said, if it is a consensus, or the, you know, basically the committee and that they support Dr. Oge, then I feel we could invite the public in at a meeting and say, it's a sense of the committee that we're going to hire Dr. Oge, and have anybody come in what they want. Why 10,000 people? Let, let anybody come in and sit, get it off their chest, which, what they, whether they support it or not. You know, it's kind of, kind of simple process to me. You know, of course, what you have is, you'll have people come in that, that won't speak up, okay, publicly, but they certainly sure as hell will privately, but, so let them come up and speak against Dr. Oge and, and Dr. Oge in public. Thank you.
Mrs. Evans-Ado.
Just two quick things. I think it's a shame we couldn't ask a couple of the people in the audience what they thought, because there are three people right there that have been on, served on multiple search committees, and I'd just like to know whether they would like to go out for a search or not, I just, as a matter of curiosity. Obviously, I'm not making my decision on that, I've already said that I, I don't think we should be forming a search committee. But the second thing I want to say is, I think we need to be very sure when we do the interview, if that's the direction the committee's going in, that it's very structured, guidelines, not a free-for-all, because Dr. Oge, we will scare him away.
Swing him on.
And he will leave. We don't want that. So I just would just suggest that we have, like-
I appreciate that, actually, thank you.
-structured questions, and, like we had previously, when, when the committee, people could submit questions, and we can figure a way out or a process of, you know, tailoring down the number of questions.
Yeah, I think we always want to make sure that we go through our human resources department to make sure all of the questions are, are questions that are appropriate to ask any candidate, and that would be why I would still have any sort of interview committee or search committee, or whatever we decide to call it, to make sure that we go through human resources, because that's how we've interviewed everybody in the past, and we should continue with that process to make sure that we legally are asking the most appropriate questions. So, no, I would not support people merely coming up and asking whatever they felt like it, because I think that that would not be a very good thing for our school committee to go into the, we still want to go through the processes as we always have. So, we haven't really come to a resolution, and, and that is fine, but I just want to make sure that I understand that we're looking at perhaps doing some sort of an interview committee, and that is something that we will do more of a finalization in August. Does that sound like a good place we are? My, I guess my only other question is, do we want to start asking folks who are interested in getting on to such a endeavor for, basically through our website, to ask if they would like to participate? Mrs. Evans-Ado.
I'd say yes, but do we need a motion?
No, I think that that's something that we can merely agree upon, and we can start that process.
I would have thought-
If you want to make a motion, you may make a motion. We can do things by consensus every once in a while. So, Mr. Thompson, and then Mrs. Benson.
I, I would like to see that go out. I would like to see something go out to the all, the whole community of North Kingston School Department, and, and just say that we're, we're looking for people who are interested, and let your interests be known.
Mrs. Benson.
I think that part is being taken care of, but the main thing that I would like to make a motion to, that instead of the regular search committee, using that and taking the time and going to-
You're saying interview committee, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we be an interview committee. Anything wrong with that, Mr. Welch?
And your question to me is why?
Mrs. Benson, so your motion is that you make a motion to use an interview committee to do exactly what? I just want to make sure I flesh out the motion here.
To follow the procedures that's been followed, and advertise that we are having a interview committee, and that the school committee, I'll make it in two parts.
Is it that you want to have an interview committee to discuss Dr. Thornton, I mean, I'm sorry, Dr. Oge as a perspective for the superintendent job?
Yes, not use his name.
Well, I think it's okay to use his name, since that's what they're going to be doing.
Okay, well, let's give them specific directions.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to have an interview committee, I mean, to, I'm sorry. Ev, do you do take it down better than I did?
Interview committee to follow procedures to advertise, to discuss Dr. Oge's as superintendent.
A partner as superintendent.
It is a little convoluted.
You want to advertise for a committee to participate in an interview of Dr. Oge.
Is that what you wanted to say, Mrs. Benson?
Well, she's the one with the law degree, and that's what we have her here for.
Want to advertise-
It was the same thing on the average issues, and I am potting, she's using an electorate one.
Okay, so is that, is that what you'd like to have as your motion?
Yes. Repeat your statement, Mrs. Uh-
I know, I was trying to, you were-
Repeat your statement, attorney.
You want to advertise for participants to participate, you want to advertise for people to participate in an interview process regarding Dr. Oge assuming the position of superintendent.
That's it succinctly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second on that motion. Is there discussion?
Please.
Mr. Mudge.
Could, you know, could you, somebody tell me exactly what the roles and responsibilities the committee, the interview committee is going to have? In other words, if we're going to have a committee, is it 55,000 people, you know, are they three people, is it one of these, it's one of those? You know, I think you ought to have an idea of what the committee is going to be comprised of-
Well, what we can do-
And what you're going to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, finish your thought.
And, you know, what we're looking for.
What we can do is after, what we have done in the past when we have put these committees together, is we have gotten the names, and then we have all voted on the names.
Yeah, but again, we, we shouldn't, we have a structured committee before we start the process?
Wouldn't you advertise for participants, see who participates, as a committee, choose the participants, and then allow them to either come to an open meeting like this and ask Dr. Oge questions that have been approved by that interview committee?
That's what we've done in the past, yes. So you still have, we haven't done it in public before, when we've done the interview committees. We have done it in private. We've had the school committee be able to interview in public, and the questions have all been formulated, or at least brought to, they can bring some of their own questions, but I know most of them are brought by human resources.
But you would want to see the questions ahead of time, so that they are appropriate questions.
Well, most of them, I think, are put together by human resources, and then the participants have the opportunity, before the interview, that if they wanted to add some questions, they could, but yes, they're all known. Mrs. Gardiner knows all the questions, and basically divvies them out among the participants- Mrs. Gardner knows all the questions and basically divvies them out among the participants to make sure everyone gets to ask one and, and nobody overlaps in asking the same question.
So, what is the structure of the committee? We have six people on it or 16?
Why don't we add, Mrs. Gardner has said that she'd be willing to describe how she's done it before.
Well, if she could just send that to us, it would probably be something we could look at, you know, and
Could you come to the front and we could hear you?
How many, how many, like, for example, you have specific groupings of, you know, interest in here, but how many open, open people in public that are, would be on the committee? In other words, you're going to have three teachers or three principals, are you going to have?
Well, you see, that's what I would like to see before I, I would approve on something like that because, you know, we may feel that that's inappropriate. And I'm not saying it is, but I, I just think Well, I understand, but I just like to see what the makeup of a committee would be before I, I vote on a committee.
Well, she's telling you right now.
Well, then, could you send me something about, but what are we going to advertise in the, in the, in the paper for? You know, that's all I'm saying, it's, it's, I don't
No, no, no.
I don't think we need to advertise in the paper. I don't think that's, we've, we've just, we've just advertised over the listserv before. Yeah.
We've never done it publicly before either.
Well, it's cool. I think we should. We should have to advertise it.
How many people in general public? No, no, general public. That PTO is not general public.
Correct, they're associated with the school.
I believe that's what we've had in the past.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Benson.
Mrs. Gardner, do you have that in your files as to how we did it the last time? I think you're adding more people than we had. I would We would need to know the names, but why don't you? Yes, because we did have principal, a representative from the principal association, CLAG, the elementary schools' PTOs, we asked for one, and two from the high school, a high school teacher. Did we say teacher or just two from the high school, a parent and a teacher?
Okay.
Okay. And then how do we, how did we include the public? How was the public included? Because I remember someone was on it and say they read it in the newspaper and wanted to volunteer. The general public, that's not connected with
Can I make a suggestion? In, in the past, on, on other interview committees, Deb and I had, that have organized, for instance, the high school principal, we, after choosing the representative group, for instance, we, we asked the high school faculty, for instance, that if they had not been included in that group and really wanted to be, that we would pick two more at-large members. And what we did was ask for volunteers, and if we got five of them, well, we'd pick two out of a hat. So, there was this, you know, this understanding that we, we want to make, you know, this as inclusive as possible, you know, within limits of having a controllable group and, and that sort of thing, but we're open to having people take part, even if you're not a PTO president or, or have, you know, a particular role in the community, like a principal or a teacher. And, and perhaps that's something that could be done where you say there'll be three at-large spots and that we would pick them totally at random from a list of people who would, you know, submit.
All right, so I want to make sure here
I may have finished, I was
One last question, and then, go ahead.
Say what?
Go ahead.
Well, my question to you, Mrs. Gardner, if you have the paperwork from the last time and Madam President, you said yourself and all of us members agreed that this was a job that the public was going to be in, even those organizations, when you speak of PTOs and teachers, you're talking about the group that's within a school. But what are we going to do in naming people from the public? How many are we going to have? Now, we don't need a, a committee of 50 people, you'll never get anything done.
I think maybe
And remember
The members should appoint one from the public then.
I, I want to remind everybody here that this is the only person who we as a school committee hire.
That's correct.
So, while we can have a small interview committee, we are ultimately the ones who will hire the superintendent. So, in the past, we've had a search committee, and then we have narrowed it down, and we, the school committee, have interviewed the final parts of the candidacy. So, we don't want to abrogate that responsibility of hiring a superintendent to an interview committee and not do our due diligence to make sure that we don't interview Dr. Oj.
And that's why I feel that the school committee as a whole should set a date as quickly as possible. Dr. Oj lives here, we all live here, and let's meet with him.
Okay, Mrs. Avanzato.
I agree with what Mrs. Benson just said. I think we were getting a little bit off track and, as I was as well. I think that's very appropriate to have everybody involved when we're choosing amongst a bunch of candidates for superintendent, but we're interviewing one person and really that's going to be our employee, the school committee. And we represent the public, so maybe we can take, if anyone wants to submit particular questions, I guess they could submit them to the school committee, but it really should be our interview, actually, of, of Dr. Oj. I've kind of changed my mind on it. And I think Mrs. Benson's right, and it simplifies it. I think we're getting way out of hand. We're not choosing from a mon, a bunch of different candidates, it's not necessary to go through that.
Okay, we've
Now, we have
We have a motion on the floor that we have a motion to you, to have, form an interview committee with people to participate in interviewing Dr. Oj for the position of superintendent.
I'm going to withdraw my second on that motion because I don't think we were, I think it was going in the wrong direction, getting too out of control, so I'm going to withdraw my second on that.
All right, so we no longer have a motion on the table?
That's your motion.
If we would, unless we have a second, and I don't think we do.
Whose motion was that?
Mrs. Benson's.
I withdraw the motion, and I'd like to make another motion.
What is your motion?
My new motion would be that the entire school committee meet with Dr. Oj within the next eight days. I think I was called about a meeting the 18th, and I don't know what that meeting's for, but I think we as a, my motion is so that we can have coherence with the school committee, let us meet with him. You were right.
I would second that motion, but not the eight days.
The 18th, our meeting is
Undo that.
Regarding negotiations, it is mainly an executive session.
Supposed to have July off, not to complain.
Okay, well, let's have them, okay, I will withdraw the days and say that, that the entire school committee would work with, would meet with Dr. Oj. What's the first date in August?
Why don't we look at our August agenda and that we
That's the thing we're trying to get away from, what's the agenda? My thing is, and what I'm preaching for, is that the school committee be unified. You just sat here and told us that we are responsible and it's our responsibility, and we can have emergency meetings according to the open meeting law of the school committee and that Dr. Oj meet with the entire school committee.
Mrs. Benson, this isn't an emergency, so it wouldn't fall under the emergencies.
Well, we have plenty of time to get it to the Secretary of State.
Right, but it's not an emergency, so it wouldn't fall under that.
Can I make a suggestion that we just make the motion to, to the school committee to interview Dr. Oj, and then we can
At a time to be determined.
At a time to be determined, and we can figure that out with everyone's schedule.
I second that motion.
I third.
All right, so we have a motion on the table now to interview Dr. Oj at a time to be determined. We have a second. Mr. Thompson.
I just want to ask the, the makers of this new motion and the second, if they would tell, tell me or tell the people here how we're going to get this community buy-in that we've been talking about, the openness, the transparency of dealings and et cetera.
It's going to be a public meeting. That's the buy-in. They can come listen to his answers and, and really, we make the decision anyway, Joe, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, that's, that's, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Look, may I ask a question, please?
Mr. Mudge.
I assume that we would do our interview with Dr. Oj in private?
No, I believe the data just said this would be a public interview.
Okay, and then as we do that, I think we could offer the public their comments, like I said earlier. So, I certainly support that discussion in public, but I would add not to exclude people who would like to attend the meeting and offer their comments. I'm not sure if Dr. Oj would agree with that, but I think that gives them the public buy-in if they care, they know what we're thinking about, and then we have an idea of what they're thinking about.
I think, Mr. Mudge, that we could always ask people to write us via email or to write us a letter as to their comments, but we do not, our interviews are never conducted that we basically ambush somebody with questions. That would not be professional, so we would always, even when we have had our interviews in the past with superintendent candidates, we've had questions from the human resources department, and we've all made sure that we, we get a chance to ask them so that all the questions are appropriate in, in terms of legally not asking questions. Like, I would be very irritated if you asked me, started asking me maybe questions about my age or who I dated in the past or, or those sort of things.
Let's up in the chair to make sure that that doesn't happen.
But, but I have, while, yes, I am a lawyer, I have not had a background in human resources. I think the, the appropriate thing that we have done in the past is always get all the questions from human resources. We decide if there's any questions we want to ask in addition to those, and those are approved or not, and then they're all divvied up among the committee to make sure that everything we ask is appropriate.
Well, we're certainly not going to
That's how it's been done for the last couple of superintendent interviews, and I think legally we should follow the same process.
That doesn't make it right.
We can still have input from the community, but it would be input that is not done during a public session. It's input that they can give us at any time, the, like I said, and we can take that in consideration, but it would not be appropriate. Mr. Thompson.
With this meeting that we're talking about, would it, would it include an, a session where the, the public comes down to the microphone and makes the comments? Now, I know when they make the comments, we're not allowed to answer them back.
Oh, you can't.
No, it would not, it would not have comments such as that, and that is not how we've been done it before. People want to make comments to us, they can make comments to us individually after the meeting, they can email us their comments prior, but you don't have people making comments about a, a person that you were interviewing during a meeting. Just as you wouldn't have people coming up if you were in an interview and step into the interview and say, "Oh, he's a real gem," or, "Oh, she's a real jerk." That would not be appropriate in any sort of, of interview session.
Well, we're leaving the public input out there, if we're going to sit up here and ask
I have public input, but you do not have public input during the interview.
Okay.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Well, Dr. Oj will be asked, acting as interim. The public has the opportunity to view his performance. They can email us at any time, we're open to any feedback, and they can even send us questions, you know, for when we do have the final interview, if, and, and then we can, as committee members, decide if we want to submit those particular questions.
You say a final interview, but I guess
Yes, there is a motion on, all right, there is a motion on the table. Let's make sure we have the motion on the table.
For the discussion?
Fine. I'm not saying, I just want to make sure we read back the motion so everybody remembers what it is. So, we have the discussion that is about the motion.
Okay, what I have is the school committee to have public interviews to interview Dr. Oj at a time to be determined.
Thank you.
I call the question, take a
Either, either call the question or take a, a vote on it.
Call the question.
No, I had my hand up.
Motion to call the question, I second the motion to call the question.
Okay, there has to be
It is not debatable.
There has to be two-thirds of a majority to call the question. So, roll call vote.
Kimberly Page?
Say.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
No.
Richard Welsh?
Yes.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Mel Lloyd Benson?
No.
William Mudge?
No.
Three, three.
Mr. Mudge.
Yes. This thing is still kind of fermenting here. You know, Mrs. Avanzato had made the comment, we're going to have a public, which, you know, which I really think should be private, but a public review, I assume
I ought to have it in private.
Which is fine, but, which, but I assume that the committee questions that we ask are not filtered. Mr. Thompson, yourself, any of us can ask any question that we want. Now, given that, okay, getting an input into the public, which is kind of confusing to me, with maybe one exception, if we have our interview publicly, then we ought to give the public a couple of weeks to write comments in based on the discussion that we have, so then we could take those into consideration before we make a final decision. Now, that's, Mrs. Avanzato said we could have the comments, and this is a way of, of both us airing out publicly a review, and quite frankly, then we can wait a couple of weeks or a month, you know, chew on that, and then meet again and then vote on the motion, but I don't think you'd be voting on the motion the night that you interviewed Dr. Oj. So, I, I, if that's the process, then I would support that, okay? But it's still unclear what the process is, I think you're looking for.
All right, I will put one input in, just so you remember, yes, the process is always open. In the past, we have always been able to submit questions ahead of time to human resources, and then they let us know or reword them if we have written them improperly to, to make sure that all, everything is okay. The same thing with the public. Right now, we don't have a determined period, period of time that we have set this interview. We merely said that in the future, we are going to set this interview time. So, it's not as if we are excluding public comment, it is not, but during that interview, public could not come up to the mic. We would still be encouraging people to write to us, we could take questions from people ahead of time as long as they are vetted, because once again, I must stress that the process of hiring people is something that we have to take very seriously, and we do not want to get ourselves in trouble with asking inappropriate questions. So, yes, you have between now and whenever, and I think from what I've heard of the committee, this won't be something that we'll be setting a date for, and we don't have the date in the motion until sometime in August, so that's plenty of time for each of us to write our questions as we wish, to send them to Mrs. Gardner to make sure that they would be appropriate questions. If they are not appropriate questions, they will not be asked.
And who's going to judge whether something's appropriate or not appropriate?
Mrs. Gardner will make sure that she does, she knows her job, and she can also make sure that she
Not that she doesn't know her job.
I am speaking, Mr. Mudge, one person at a time, and then Mrs. Gardner can also make sure that she checks that with our legal counsel to make sure that everything is fine. All right, I saw Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Avanzato's hand up.
We were, I think what Mr. Mudge is concerned, and I have the same concern, is that when we have the interview, which is now going to be school committee interviewing Dr. Oj, that we don't take the vote that night, that we have the interview on the one meeting and then have the vote perhaps on the next meeting, and that way we'll get a chance to have any inputs from the public, we will do our due diligence, we can, we can say honestly that we are asking for a community buy-in to this situation and that we mean what we say. And, and I think by, by making it clear that we're not going to do an interview and a vote on the same night, I, I haven't heard anyone really nail that down, but if you can nail that down, then I'm, I'm all, I'm with you on this.
Mrs. Avanzato.
I was just going to say that I was just going to say that I think some of the details of it aren't in this motion. This motion is just about setting the process to have an interview. I'm certainly not against giving some time after the interview, and before our vote, for feedback from the public, which is what everybody seems to want.
You're right.
That's fine, I mean, I agree with that, so.
So, is that amending the motion?
No, I, I don't think- We can still take the motion right now, and then there can be another motion. So, we have a motion on the floor, do we have any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and call the motion.
I'm not sure what it is.
I'm not either.
Have an interview committee to interview Dr. Ogier.
Is that, is that the one that I just said before?
Yes.
The one you said before, yeah.
Is it? Am I right? Um, school committee to have a public interview with Dr. Ogier at a time to be determined?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Abenzado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
Like to make a motion that upon our, our interview with Dr. Ogier, that we, uh, at the, at the succeeding meeting, or two after that, that we then vote on his, his candidacy, and the job as superintendent, and that will give us a time to also weigh in and get any other comments that may come out from the public as a result of our conversation, our public conversation, that way we get the feedback, so, uh-
So, is your motion that you would not want to take a vote on the night of the interview, but you would like to take it on the succeeding meeting?
Oh, the next one after that, whatever is appropriate to get some input in from the community.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Roll call.
Was that for one or two meetings, Mrs. Abenzado? I'm not sure which one I asked.
Um, I guess, I don't know.
One meeting.
Your motion was that the interview take place the one meeting, and the vote on the candidacy be the following meeting.
And is that enough to get the public input into us, and digest that?
That would be fine. Yes, you remember, we're not having this, we haven't set up this interview, so we'll start getting public comment soon. Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Well, that's in, that's in two weeks anyway, right, time?
You haven't even set the date for when you're going to do it, it could be three weeks, it could be four weeks, it could be a first-
Yeah, but I guess I'm concerned that we at least have two weeks for the public to get an input in, that's all.
Okay, Mrs. Benson.
Uh, this interview with the school committee, I think we should include the interview with the school committee in the minutes, so we'll have it, because we're going back on past track.
Right, but you've already made, you've already made and passed the motion to interview, for the school committee to interview. Mr. Mudge's motion right now is to make sure that you don't interview and appoint at the same night.
Yes.
So, I believe, Mr. Mudge, that what you want to do is interview at one meeting, and not appoint until the following meeting, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, so your motion is to interview at one meeting, and not appoint until the following meeting.
That's correct.
That's his motion.
Okay, I second that motion.
I think we already have a second from Mrs. Abenzado. Is there any more discussion on the motion? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Abenzado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we have covered basically everything that I had hoped to cover tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.